Mr. President.
Thank you. Officer Stewart, would you lead us in prayer tonight?
Dear Father, we honor the Bible for your name, dear God, give you all the honor and glory, and praise your heaven and father. Dear Father, we actually be the ones who sit and shut in the night in Montser County, dear heaven and father. Dear Father, we actually come be with us tonight as we attempt to conduct the county's business, dear heaven and father. Dear Father, we actually business great nation, dear heaven and father, blessed, dear heaven and father. Dear Father, we actually come be with us, bless us, dear heaven and father, help us to make the right decisions, dear heaven and father, bring you to honor and glory, dear heaven and father. All these things, ask Christ Jesus, hold your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Do you want me to pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. All right, we'll do roll call, Stacy.
Chris Nixon?
Here.
Lynn Reese?
Here.
Terry Gibbons?
Here.
Billy Bass?
Here.
Fred Kirby?
Here.
Jason Stewart?
Here.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Here.
Stephanie Michaela?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey? Erica Ebel?
Here.
Ron Schumay?
Here.
Ron Cowan?
Linda Nixon?
Here.
Eddie Stout?
Here.
Casey Elroy?
Here.
Steve Badcock?
Here.
Bill Reese?
Here.
Tommy Vane?
Here.
Joey Nixon?
Here.
Dennis Hackett?
Tim Ballard?
Here.
Teresa Gross?
Here.
Frank Woodard?
Here.
Twenty. Twenty here, all right. Item number five is the approval of a minute for the last meeting, June 28 to 2021. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Lynn Reese, Jason Stewart. I have a motion and a second. Any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. I do not have any announcements tonight. Anyone have any tonight? There is a, if you need to speak, there's a wireless mic on every, on each table, so if you, at that time, you've got to act. All right. Number seven amendments to agenda. We really don't have any amendments. The only change will be is Mr. Jackie Carver is not here tonight. He had vacation by school, but we will be doing a presentation for the sheriff at that time, so when it gets there, we'll do that. Are there any other amendments or changes approved, changes to the agenda? If not, I would take a motion to approve the agenda as written. Frank Woodard? Second Eddie Stout? I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, County Mayor report. All right, in your, tonight Stacy handed you out a letter from the controllers that we received last week, and the salary supplement, supplements that were, that are in the budget, the budget, that already there. The controller did issue guidance last week to hold off on spending any money until September until the final rule is set. Now, what a final, they published something about interim final rule, and we looked up the definition of that, but basically what the controller's office is telling us is to do not spend any of this money until September, so we're going to hold those, hold that for now until September because we don't want to write a check and have to write a bill and bank check in October. All right. Legislature, legislature did approve another round of funding for next year. It's three hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. It will, should get our bank accounts in August. Bank property, we are working on some things for it, hopefully have a better update on it next week. The redistricting committee was set, you guys approved the last meeting. They will make their first meeting on July 26th to get that committee started. The date is still looking somewhere September, October, hopefully sooner, and that is going to make this process and timeline for redistricting very short in getting that done because with the Republican Party calling for primaries, we will have to get all this done into our papers. I believe we're picked up in the middle of December is what, is what Mr. Yvonne said, just to sort of get into that primary in May. That's all I have on my report. Any questions for me? If not, out of nine, as you hear your committee reports from meetings there, questions on All right, if not, Mr. John Dyson is here and is going to present Sheriff Hopper with the information tonight. If you want to, there's microphones on the table and...
Oh, I think we can get pretty good without a microphone.
All right. I just wanted to make it obvious, make it favorable for you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Mason?
Senator, Commissioner. My name is John Dyson, and I'm an old retired soldier. The old part, pretty evident, everybody can figure that out pretty quick, but it's my privilege to have been in or around the United States Army for fifty-six years. I will confess that it's not the same army today that I joined, much different, equally essential and so on. I now volunteer with a small group of the Department of Defense Agency called Employer Support for the Guard and Reserve. Unlike so many federal agencies, we try to do what our name implies, and that's promote employer support for those employees who serve in the National Guard Reserve components. Opened up my email the other day, and a message landed on me that a young man named Daniel McCoy, Smith County Sheriff's Department, had thought enough about the treatment he's receiving from the Smith County Sheriff's Department, most particularly Sheriff Hopper here, that he recommended him to be recognized by the Department of Defense. And that's important because we have today five hundred thousand, all about half of our total military strength lies in the Guard and Reserve. And if you're going to have a good, strong guard, you're going to have to have the backing of your family and your employee because the guard might make you car payment, but the sheriff department makes you house payment. So he went into some lengthy detail here, I'm going to give him a minute here, but he's been a member of the Sheriff's Department about four years. In that time, he'd been gone for ten months of deployment and multiple other opportunities because twenty years ago, if you were in the National Guard, it was one weekend a month and two weeks in the summer. About nineteen ninety, that went out the window, hadn't been true since. Today, there are over thirty-five thousand members of the Guard and Reserve somewhere on this planet, twenty different time zones, you will find members of the Guard. He's pretty clever, the deputy is here, because he went off to school while the rest of his Army National Guard, they marched off to the, to the wonderful lush climate of Fort Hood, Texas right now, which is a dry, hot, and dusty place. So he's here, and a while ago, we probably got more rain while I was sitting at the Waffle House down here than they've got this year. But he mentioned, Deputy McCoy mentioned in particular the sheriff's support, understanding, and cooperation so he can successfully manage two careers. And I couldn't have done mine anymore than he can do his without somebody like you. And so, as an old soldier and a young soldier, thank you very much, sir. It's my privilege, and I would like to present to you this award. It's a patriotic employer award. Patriot is often misused in this country, certainly overused and often abused, but patriot by Latin base is somebody who places the interest of their country above their own. And I think your actions show that you, sir, are a true patriot. So I'd like to present this to you with my thanks, and he's paid me five dollars so he can witness for you here. Deputy of the floor is yours.
Didn't really prepare a speech first off, like a celebration.
Just don't ask for license registration, you're good to go.
The rest of the council, I'm just, I'm thankful for Smith County, I'm thankful for the sheriff and for the department. Like I said, that's, the Guard didn't pay a part of payment, but your department pays no mortgage, and for that, I thank you for all of them.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you.
So I'm going to break out of here for a little bit.
Hold it, get out on the road.
Get out here. I would remind all of you, keep them in their prayers because there's a thin line between you and chaos. God bless all of you. Again, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And you, young man. Take care.
Thank y'all very much. All right, we'll move on to item B, under new business appointments. Resolution zero seven, twenty-one, twenty-one oh five is the appointment of Mr. John Wagner Jr. back as the county genealogist, genealogist and historian, with his terms expire in July of 2022. I would take a motion to approve that. Motion to approve Joey Nixon? Second. Frank, I saw Frank, so second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving down to item E is resolutions. There are four budget amendment resolutions. Two of those come with a negative recommendation from Budget and Finance, so at this point in time, I don't think grouping these tonight is possible. So we will start with resolution number one, which is resolution zero seven, twenty-twenty-one oh one. It is the, just regular budget amendments moving inside of one-on-one. Daisy, I believe some of these clear up grants for those kind of things and that, so at this time, I would take a motion on resolution number one.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve Jimmy's second, Erica. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution one. Any questions or discussions on that resolution? If not, we'll do roll call, Stacy.
Chris Nixon?
Yeah.
Lynn Reese?
Yes.
Terry Gibbons?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Fred Kirby?
No.
Jason Stewart?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Stephanie Michaela?
Yes.
Erica Ebel?
Yes.
Ron Schumay?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
This is, this is not the one for the Sheriff's Department, so if you're confused on that.
Yes.
Eddie Stout?
Yes.
Casey Elroy?
Yes.
Steve Badcock?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Tim Ballard?
Yes.
Teresa Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
All right, item number two, resolution zero seven, twenty-twenty-one, zero two, is a budget amendment, Sheriff's Department to move some money around for some salary adjustments. As I said earlier, it does come with a negative recommendation from Budget and Finance. At this time, I would take a motion to approve, deny, or whatever you want to do on that. Technically can't be talked about until we have a motion. All right, Jimmy?
Make a motion to deny the amendment.
Second.
Motion to deny by Joey Nixon and a second by Tim. Ten dollars. All right, so I have a motion and a second. Mr. Ron, would you like to give a report from, as chairman of Budget Finance on this motion, on this amendment?
Okay.
You do have a microphone if you want to use it. Turn it on, on the bottom.
Okay, we're, I'll try to talk about it.
It's working, Frank.
Anyway, just to give everybody a kind of a brief summary of the situation we were in, the last couple of years, a lot of the department heads have been telling us that their employees were underpaid, or they're losing employees going to other counties and places for unemployment because they receive more pay there. And also, some of them are saying that some of their employees in their departments were paid less than employees in other departments, so we kind of want to set about this to do something to correct this. So Jeff and Daisy, they contacted firm, I believe, Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Thompson.
That came and talked to us about it, and then he made us survey and analyzed the counties surrounding Smith County and some of the towns that had the employees. And he came back about a couple of months later and gave us a report on it. And so, we had, we had meetings, Budget Finance Committee with some of the department heads, and we discussed this, and we wanted to try to do what we could to get started on this. So Tim Ballard, that's some committee, he came up with a lot of this plan itself, and we implemented it and approved it and sent it to the full commission. And this was approved at the last commission, I believe, on the 28th of June. And so, then this last week, we had these two resolutions come back to us, wanting to change some of the employees' pay scales again. So we thought that if we did this, this would just, we had wasted all of our time and money we'd sent on the, on the analysis, so business reason, we sent it to the commission with a negative recommendation.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Sheriff, would you rock out?
Yes, sir, come on by. And if you indulge me just a little bit. Chief, would you come up, if I missed something? First off, I want to publicly thank all the members, mayor, and the Budget and Finance Committee for all your hard work on the budget. I know it's agonizing. It's a tough time of year. It is for all of us. And if my timing was bad on this, I apologize, but I don't want to penalize my guys for maybe a mistake that I made on the timing on this because I didn't mean that. But what these budget amendments would allow me to do would be to, well, I'll just tell you, my deputies and the SROs, they fell down on the bottom of the scale out of this salary supplement thing and study. And they're going to thirty-five cents an hour raise. The sergeants in correction are going to get a four dollar an hour something raise. And they're going to be making more than the deputies that are out on the road. And these budget amendments, that's the biggest part of it, is going to allow me to shift a little bit of that to the deputies. And if y'all will remember years ago, several years ago, you did a pay adjustment for the correction officers because their pay was so low, and we appreciated that. And we were told at that time that next year, we'd try, try to do for the deputies. And next year never came for that part, but, and guys, don't get me wrong, I appreciate everything y'all have done, and I just want to try to make it a little more even, and these budget amendments would allow me to do that. Basically, it's going to be given, the deputies, it'll allow me to give them, and the SROs, another forty-one cents an hour, put them in eighteen oh nine, and the money we pulled out of corrections, it would, it would put the sergeants a little bit below that. And our correction is our training ground, our proving ground. When we hire folks into corrections, most of them have the aspirations of going out on the road. And if we, if we stick strictly by this salary survey, a sergeant in corrections goes to academy and comes out on the road, he's going to have to take a pay cut. And I, that, that's all I'm trying to do, I'm not, I'm not asking for something wrong. And if my timing was bad on it, I apologize, but please don't penalize my guys. The other issue with, if you go strictly by the salary survey, my jail administrator will be making more than my chief deputy. And I, I don't think, we have a chain of command, and I don't think that anybody below the chief needs to be making more than he is. He does a super job, and so does my jail administrator. Everybody I've got does a super job. I asked some of my guys to be here tonight. I don't brag on them enough. Deputies, they answer your calls twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three sixty-five. They jump in the lake over here to try to find somebody that's underwater, in their uniforms. All three of them went over, jumped in the lake. They don't care, they're here to help, and I want to help them. SROs, they're in schools, they're mentoring, and protecting your children and your grandchildren. Guys, I just, I want to do all we can for them, and I don't mean no harm by what I asked for. I just wanted to try to, try to even it out a little bit. Chief, if you've got anything you want to add?
Couple, just a couple of things, Sheriff, if you don't mind. First of all, I want you to know that I asked him to take my part of that out.
He did.
He's standing right there, he'll take it. And if that's, if that's a gallant thing for you, take it out and be done with it. I, I do with that, don't, don't hurt those people. The deputies and Jimmy, I especially thank you because a couple of years ago, a few years ago, you said, hey, we're, we're going to get those deputies up to where we need to be. Your intentions were there, and I agree, and I know it, then we collapsed. Thank you, Mayor Mason, for, and everybody else in here that's got us to where we are. We're, we're in good shape. The deputies have to go to the police academy. They're out there, they, they deal with things, and yes, we begged and pleaded for years for the correction officers, and God bless you for what you've done for them. It's changed their lives. We want to affect seven people to shift it over to the road officers. And the survey, I mean, it turned out to be a great thing because we got, we gained out of that a lot. But, but it didn't, it wasn't always right, though. They classified our supervisor who manages our kitchen and keeps up with our budget and makes sure she doesn't overspend as a cook. She's classified as a cook. She don't cook. We've got people, we've got, we've got inmates that cook. She manages, she's a supervisor, but we didn't know when it was ignorance. I'm telling you all, my part, I never dreamed that we could come back and say, would you step these up to a higher category? That's all we had to do. They said, hey, would you consider moving them up into a higher bracket? But we didn't, so we failed. I'll be honest with you. We, we failed. Tim, thank you for what you did, great plan it was put together. Thank you all for approving it. Thank you for where we are and what you've done for us, but these adjustments need to be made. And that's, that's about all I, and, and please, I know that, you know, you're kind of upset with us, but it's, be upset with us, it's our fault. Be upset with, with me, be upset with the sheriff, but don't, don't be upset with these deputies, if there's another way to fix it. I wish it were, I wish we'd have known prior to, two weeks ago or whatever, Mr. Ron, but we didn't, we didn't think about, not smart enough, I wasn't, to say, hey, look, Mr. Ron, would you consider doing this? And that's why we coming back at the first right off the budget here and asking for just adjustments. There's no more money, we're not asking for any more money.
Not going to cost a penny, not going to take a penny out of the...
Not, not one, not one penny. But you know what we're, the times we're living in, you know what these officers are doing? The situations that they've been, they get treated like dogs, they get talked to like This is the right thing to do, in our opinion, and I'd, I'd surely appreciate if you consider it. Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Any questions?
Any other discussion? Any other, you may also want to discuss this motion. We will call roll call now. And you're voting to reject this, a yes vote rejects this resolution. A no vote decides it to vote in the end.
Chris Nixon?
No.
Lynn Reese?
Mr. Mayor, I have to stay in view of conflict.
Okay, do we know it?
Terry Gibbons?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
No.
Fred Kirby?
Yes.
Jason Stewart?
I'm staying due to conflict.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Stephanie Michaela? Erica Ebel?
Yes.
Ron Schumay?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
No.
Eddie Stout?
Yes.
Casey Elroy?
Yes.
Steve Badcock?
I'm going to stay due to conflict.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Tim Ballard?
Yes.
Teresa Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
All right, that resolution is denied by a vote of fourteen to three. So moving on to item number three. It is a motion, it is a resolution budget amendment by the Circuit, Circuit Court clerk asking to move money inside there to, basically something, just move the money to fix a salary bond as well.
Motion to deny the amendment.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Second, a motion and a... So I have a motion and a second to deny, resolution zero three. Any questions or discussions on that? Mr. Ron is saying, okay. Any other questions or discussions on this one? All right, roll call, Stacy. Again, a yes vote denies this resolution.
Chris Nixon?
Yes.
Lynn Reese?
Yes.
Terry Gibbons?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Fred Kirby?
Yes.
Jason Stewart?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Stephanie Michaela?
Yes.
Erica Ebel?
Yes.
Ron Schumay?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Eddie Stout?
Yes.
Casey Elroy?
Yes.
Steve Badcock?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Tim Ballard?
Yes.
Teresa Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Yeah.
That, that motion and that resolution is denied by a vote of seventeen. Item number four is resolution zero seven, twenty-twenty-one oh four. It is a budget amendment for the highway fund. They are moving money inside there, but we're on that normal, regular adjustment, very good.
Yes, they had one person who increased, but they put down at five cents instead of, can't remember exactly how much it was, like everybody else.
So that's just fixing that. All right. So that's just fixing that type of for this resolution.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve. Jimmy Winfrey, second. Tommy Vane, I have a motion and a second to approve, resolution 07, 2021-04. Any questions or discussions on that? If not, we do roll call, Stacy.
Chris Nixon?
Yes.
Lynn Reese?
Yes.
Terry Gibbons?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Jason Stewart?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Stephanie Michaela?
Yes.
Erica Ebel?
Yes.
Ron Schumay?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Eddie Stow?
Yes.
Casey Elroy?
Yes.
Steve Batcock?
Yes.
Bill Reese?
Yes.
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Tim Ballard?
Yes.
Teresa Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Yeah.
That motion passed in, 29 seconds. All right. We'll move on to, uh, number 11, other business. One thing on other business, we, we moved back here tonight to meet. And I, Joe and I talked about, we passed a resolution and we made here until the pandemic had passed. Is that correct?
Uh, we have to make take a word of that.
I guess basically, we didn't just, you want, you want to, you want to stay meeting here, or you want to move back to the court facilities? It's, of course, one time a year, we have to move back because of repairs. We do stay here, or we can change that date. I just want to get your, give you guys thoughts on that. I have a motion. Maybe we go back to the court and jail facility? Second, I have a motion as a second. All right. All those in favor going back to the court and jail facility?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
No.
No. Have one else? All right. So I guess we'll go back there. Next time, in all this. All right. Moving on to the other, uh, business. We did pass a resolution, or meant a motion to proceed with the road commissioners selection. And a hard hat was signed was to bring those guys in and allow them to give an opening statement. And some questions that you guys submitted, maybe you have a list before you of the 10 questions that we came up with that you guys submitted to us and we put together. At the, at the end, after that's done, you will have a chance to ask follow-up questions if you feel the need. At this time, I would ask Mr. Kemp, Mr. Shores.
I, I believe that as we talk about this process, you'll need to have to both nominate.
That's correct. That's correct. You will, you will nominate them tonight for voting in a's. Is that correct?
And you don't need a safe non-nomination, anyone can nominate.
Okay. Okay. At this time, I would take a nomination for the position of road commissioner.
Mayor, a nomination from Mr. Kemp.
Lynn Reese?
Mayor, a nomination from Book Shores.
Jason Stewart, a nomination from Book Shores. So I have a nomination for Mr. Kemp and Mr. Shores. All right. We take action, just leave it there. So we have a nomination. Those are two nominations on the floor. All right. At this time, we would ask Mr. Kemp, Mr. Shores to come down. If you want to sit or stand, or which area one, there's a microphone, three chairs. Whatever you feel most comfortable with. Put you on hotspot. If you feel like you can talk it out, that's fine, if not. Do whatever you feel most comfortable. We, we, it was determined that we would start an alphabet award of solvency. You can get your open statement.
Thank you, the commissioners and the mayor for having me here tonight and considering me for this position. And thank you, folks, for coming out. I was born in Carthage in 1981. I lived my whole life in Smith County. I'm a 2000 graduate of Smith County High School, and I currently reside in South Carthage with my wife and four children. I worked as a kitchen manager at the Timber Law Restaurant when I was in high school, before I started my career of 20 years in the road building industry. I began my career as a laborer with a shovel in my hand and worked my way up to equipment operator and supervisor positions. In my mid-20s, I became interested in the position of road superintendent, but realized that I lacked the necessary experience to do that job. So I continued my career until I gained the experience and knowledge. I would like to put that experience and knowledge to work for the great people of Smith County, and I hope that by being here tonight, I can gain your support so we can work together to make improvements to our roads that will last for decades.
Thanks, sir. Shores, your open statement.
I'd like to, to, uh, thank committees, all the people here tonight. I'm a Book Shores. I live here in Smith County. I went to public school here. Proud to say that. I'm proud of our county. Uh, through several years of experience, that's the reason I'm looking for this job, asking for this job. I've got numbers of years of experience. Worked for the highway department before. I feel like that I can move the highway department in a forward progress to increase better roads. I believe that Smith County is a great county, that we can make our roads better, and that's what I want to do. I want to work hard to do it and to prove to everybody that it can be done. I know it can, and I want to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And since, and then we decided with your flip-flop awareness, so, uh, Shores, you will get the first question. You have three minutes to answer. Why do you feel you are the most qualified to become road commissioner?
Like I said, said in my opening statement, I've worked at the highway department. I'm familiar with it. I've worked in, with the budgets over there. Not many of you are aware, but when we built the building over there, the highway department, I was in on the planning stage of it, with the architects. I cleared the ground where it's at. I, I've done numerous things. I've done everything in the highway department that can be done, from shoveling, coal mix, to shooting tar on the road. I think that I can work good with all the state people as far as inspections. I'd like to get, uh, back into, uh, the state aid roads, where the state will pay 75%, and we can work out our 75, our 25%. And to me, that's free money, that we can work on our road, get our roads in better shape. I think it, uh, this can be done, and I'm going to work hard to do it. I know that this job is more than a five-day-a-week job, eight hours a day, and I'm willing to do it. I'm willing to give 110%. I've been out on Christmas Day with the highway department. I believe in it. I believe, hold hardly, that we can have good roads for our, our county here, for our kids, or school kids, who ride on the bus, not have no trouble. The sheriff's department, ambulance people, can get to somebody that needs help. I know their roads are in constant repair. We need to repair them, and we need to increase, increase them in a better state. We don't need to get over in the grass when we need another car. Or we don't need a school bus to get on the edge of a ditch when they need a car. That's unacceptable to me. I don't like to see it. And it won't happen under my administration if I'm lucky enough to get it. I, I'll work hard. I'll do the very best job that I can. I'll make you that promise. It's going to be an open-door policy. If there's ever any questions, please ask me. Come and see me, or I'll come see you. Just let me know what I need to do. And I will do it. I'll work with anybody that wants to help our county system, to improve it, to make it great. That's why I'm here. I want our county road system to be second to none. And I'm going to strive to do that. I'm going to do everything I can for that to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Shores. Progress, Kemp, same question to you. Why do you feel you are the most qualified to become road commissioner?
In my 20-plus years of experience, I've learned from some of the best in the business. I've done about everything there is to do with building a road. And I'm very dedicated to my career, and I'm very, uh, very honest. And I believe I can do a very good job with that department and get the roads back in good condition and get everything back the way it should be. And I'm, I've got, I've got.
Thanks, sir. All right. Question number two goes back to you, Mr. Kemp. Please discuss your work experience and how that would apply to this position.
20 years ago, I started out on a shovel and worked my way into jobs with more responsibility. At this point in my career, I've done nearly everything there is to do pertaining to the building of a road. I've been on a base crew putting down stone, a paving crew laying asphalt, and I've worked on subgrade as well. I can read blueprints and set grades, layout jobs, anything pertaining to building a road, I've done it.
All right. Mr. Shores, please discuss your work experience and how that would apply to this position.
Like I stated before, I've worked for the county highway department, numbers of years. And after I got out of there, I went public work for different companies. I've started budgets. I've kept my budgets in line. I've made budgets. Uh, at the present time, the company I'm with, we've done a lot of work at the BNA Airport. When you do work there for the federal government and national government, you under strict guidelines. You have blueprints. You bring everything to the blueprint. You make sure that the grade is right. You make sure that everything is as good as it can be or better than what's on the blueprint. You don't mess around with federal government. There's no way. Same way with the state. I like to work with inspectors. I love to. I want to show them what I can do. If they tell me I've got to do something or show me a blueprint, yes, sir, I'll do it. I'll be glad to do it. I want to do it. I think it, uh, the more knowledge you have, the better job you can do. And to me, a blueprint, digging a ditch, whatever it takes, I can do it. I can get it done. I want to do it. I think that I can lead the people that's over there right now in a positive manner. I've, I've worked for several companies, had several employees under me. I've been in very particular situations. I've handled the situations in an orderly manner, and I want to do that here. I want to get something done. I want to go to work and get a job done. I want to do the job right the first time, not have to come back and do it again two weeks later or a month later. I want to show everybody. I want everybody to stand up, all commissioners, and say, hey, look at our county. Look at our road system. Look how good it's becoming. I want people at Walmart to walk up to y'all and say, well, I don't, I don't know what's going on over there, but boy, it's sure improving. I want that. I want people of Smith County to be proud of our system, proud of y'all. Not that they're not. But I want them to be, walk up and say, boy, y'all have done a good job. That's what I want. And it ain't just me. It ain't going to be the county road system. It's all of us, all of us together. This is not one man's show. It's all of us together, working together, and accomplishing something.
All right. You have three minutes left on that one. All right. We'll move on to question number 3. And to you, Mr. Shores. Would you describe yourself as a leader or manager?
I'd describe myself as both. I believe this government body needs a manager for the highway department and needs a leader. That falls in the same category. You've got to be a leader, and you've got to be a manager at the same time. You've got to manage your money, stay within your budget. Don't deviate from your budget. Make sure that every employee is doing what they need to do, and if they're not, take the time to show them. Show them what you want them to do. Explain to them. That way, they can do it. I want every employee over there to say, hey, I accomplished something today. Look what I did. I'm proud of them. When they go home tonight, I want them to say, boy, I did a good day's work, and I really did. I've done something. I think that, uh, we've got some good employees over there, and I want to keep them. And if somebody wants to, a younger person or another person wants to learn how to run, run equipment, I welcome it. The more they know, the better off we are. You don't have to depend on one man being there today if you've got two or three that can do his job if he's not there. That's the way I look at it. That, that way you don't slow down. You don't have nothing else except work. You can turn that work. You can do your work right, and that's what I want.
Mr. Kemp, would you describe yourself as a leader or manager?
I would have to say both. I believe both because being road superintendent for all the roads in the county, you'd have to be both. Um, you'll have to be a leader for the men, the crews, and you'll have to be a manager in the office, take care of business. We both. Welcome.
All right. Thanks, sir. So back to you, Mr. Kemp, on this question. What would be your plan in the first 100 days?
First, I would like to get to know the employees, their job responsibilities, what they do, and how well they work together. Um, and I mean, you just, I need to see what goes on to see what changes would need to be made. And I feel that I can learn from them because I mean, I fully realize that I'm coming from the private side of road building, the public side of road building. I realize there'll be differences. And I learn from them. They can learn from me, and I'll make changes as needed when I see how it goes, what needs to be changed. And I'd like to get out and start checking all the roads, to come up with a plan, to make sure we're working every road, to see what they've done to every road, and getting them back into good condition and maintaining them properly. All right.
Shores, what would your plan be in the first 100 days?
First 100 days would be a lot of questions for me. First one hundred days would be a lot of questions for me. I'd like to talk to each employee, see what their wants and needs are for them to do a job. I wanna see all the equipment. I wanna make sure that they have tools to work with. If something needs to be fixed, I want it fixed where they have something to do a good job with. They go, if I send them out on a job and they ain't got the tools to work with, how can I expect them to do a good job? They can't. It's impossible. I don't want that. I wanna do a good job. I wanna show that they can do a good job, they know how, they've got a, there's a lot of experience over there. Experienced people. I wanna grow on that. I wanna take their knowledge, my knowledge, group it all together. I wanna work, see what they need, what, what we can do. I wanna work with other departments here in the county. I wanna get their opinion. I'm gonna sit down and make a list of the roads that I go over and prioritize which one is gonna get worked first. And I'm gonna make sure that every part of this county gets equal treatment from the highway department. That means everybody's gonna get their fair share. It might take me a day or two to get over to one side of the county because I'm having to fix a very bad spot in the other side. But that don't mean I'm not going over there. That don't mean that I'm not gonna work it. I'm going to. I'm gonna make sure everybody gets treated right and equal and fairly. That's my goal.
All right, number question number five, it's back to you, Mr. Schors. Have you studied the new budget and do you feel it is adequate to make a dent in the repairing of our roads?
I'd like to say this, a budget is a budget. Everybody here's got a budget. You don't spend what you don't have. A budget is made out for guidelines for you to work for. And if you can reach that goal without spending the money that's been allocated for that line item, I won't start a rainy day phone. It might not be that much, but it's gonna be something that I can put back and have for a later use in case of a disaster. Bad weather, whatever. I'm gonna pinch every penny that I can. I'm gonna pinch a penny till it starts squalling, 'cause I have to in my personal life, and I'm gonna spend the county's money the same way. And I don't believe anybody here would want anything different. I want everybody to know wherever penny goes. I want everybody to know where every rock, every piece of tile, every shovel of coal mix. If you wanna know, come ask me. I'll go show them. I'll prove it to whoever's there. That's what I want. An open-door policy. I want people to ask me questions where I can tell them, I can show them. And if there's a better solution, I wanna know it because I'm gonna do it. I think that a budget is more or less the law. It is the law. And you stick to it. You don't spend money that you don't have. You can't. This county can't. And I'm not going to. Now, we can't, we can't see an increase in the prices of stuff. We can't project how much stuff is gonna go up, but I'm gonna try my very best to keep it in budget. I wanna spend it right. I wanna spend every dollar wisely. And I wanna go to the state government and see if we can get any extra money for our budget. Anything I can do to better our budget, that's what I'm gonna do. Whatever it takes, I'm gonna do it.
All right, Mr. Kemp, have you studied the new budget and do you feel it is adequate to make a dent in the repairing of our roads?
I've looked it over, and I've made a few months of being there, in office there, to get a good understanding of how things work and where I can decide what would need to be changed in the budget and changes needed, and I'll definitely make the changes. And while more money is always welcome to accomplish more, I feel that me and the current staff of the highway department can accomplish what needs to be done on these roads with the money that's already available and on hand. And without doubt, I will definitely be trying for every grant that I can get from the state and get from the state aid that I can to do everything I can with our money.
Back to you, Mr. Kemp, on number six. Are you aware that the county budget and the county's department now issue all purchase orders for you as a route and all checks for the highway department? And are you prepared to work hand-to-hand with Ms. Denton, Ms. Daisy Denton, and her team to make sure the money is given and poured and spent according to all TCA codes?
Yes, of course. I have no more on that than that.
It's different when you were there before.
Before, we didn't have a PO system at the highway department. After I got out of the highway department, I went and worked for different companies. I've started POs. I'm a firm believer in PO systems. That way, you can keep up with every dime, every penny that you spend. If nothing else, I'll, I'll probably increase her work. I want more, uh, identification of what, what POs are for. I wanna know exactly what. Nothing bolted was for, what piece of equipment it went on. That way, if somebody asks me, why did you spend a hundred dollars on a bush hog on the side of the road? I can say, because a hydraulic line leaked out a forty-five gallon, I mean, a five-gallon bucket at forty-five dollars a bucket cost. I can say, right there's where it went. I'm gonna keep up with it. I want a PO system. I honor PO systems. In fact, I want more, because I want, I want everybody to know that their money is being spent wisely and where it's going. That's the main thing. Where is it going? Why is it going there?
Thank you. All right, question number seven, it's back to you, Mr. Schors. Are you willing to work with the analysis and roads and bridges committee, budget finance, and pool commission, and the mayor for ideas to help get the roads repaired?
Of course. Like I've stated before, this is not a one-man show. I wanna know what everybody's opinion is. If somebody comes up in your district and tells you that a road needs to be fixed, I want you to come to me, call me, tell me, because I keep beat everywhere, all over the county system, to know what's going on. And if you don't know what's going on, you can't fix it. There's no way. I wanna know everybody's opinion. I want, I honor everybody's suggestions. And I will say this, I wanna work closely with the, the, uh, department, with all the mayors. Everybody probably get tired of seeing me because I wanna work with y'all. The highway and bridge, bridge people, yes, sir, I wanna work with them. I'll probably worry them to death asking questions. How can we do this? What is y'all's opinion? Do you see a different way that we can improve? If there is, I'm gonna do it. I wanna do it. I wanna listen to everybody's opinion, 'cause opinion here means something to me. It might not to everybody else, but it does to me. I honor somebody that comes up and says, hey, Butch, why don't you work this road because this ditch is stopped up or this tile is stopped up? I, I may have passed over it and not seen the tile stopped up. Things like that happen. That way, when y'all come and tell me or the public comes and tells me, I can take care of it. I can eliminate the problem.
All right, question number seven, it's to you, Mr. Kemp. Are you willing to work with the analysis and the roads and bridges committee, budget finance, and pool commission, and the mayor for ideas to help get our roads repaired?
Yes, I'm always willing to hear anyone's ideas about ways to improve our roads and more efficient ways to get things done on our roads. And whether it be from the mayor, the commissioners, or general public, I welcome anybody's opinion and be glad to talk to them about any ideas that they have. And like my predecessor always said, the doors are always open, and anyone is welcome to stop in and give an opinion and ask a question. I've always liked that policy, I would have that same policy. Anyone who's welcome to stop, ask questions, make suggestions, and know what needs what that. And one thing with me, you might always, might not always get the answers you wanna hear, but you'll always get the truth from me.
All right, number one, question number eight, it's back to you, Mr. Kemp. What are your thoughts on contracting major projects out to other private companies that may be more equipped and staffed to do large projects?
I feel that is the best way to accomplish tasks that we don't have the means to accomplish on our own. My main goal is to repair roads in a way that will have lasting effect. In the future, it would be great to acquire a good paver and train men to run a paver and start paving ourselves, but at the moment, that's not feasible at the moment, and lots of things need to be done to get to that point. But I can get in office and say in office, that would be my long-term goal is to, for the county to have its own paving crew so that less money is going in to get it done and more is going in to buy an asphalt footpath. But I realize at the moment, that's not possible yet, and that takes some time.
All right, Mr. Schors, question to you. What are your thoughts on contracting major projects out to other private companies that may be more equipped and staffed to do large projects?
I believe that a private company is to make money. They don't need to make money off of us. I believe the county highway department ought to do everything possible to do the job and get it done. We may have to contract some work out, but it's gonna be very little. If I'm, I have anything to do with it, 'cause I'm not willing to pay a private contractor our money because we can do it. The highway department can do it. I'm not willing to pay somebody else to do something that we can do. Sure, we can contract work out, but we wasting our money. I feel like, now, there's some cases that we'll have to, but it'll be a have-to case before I do it. I assure you that. 'Cause every dollar I can save, I'm gonna save. And I think it'll be a waste if we have, if we just go out here and contract any and everything out when we can do it. That's a waste, and I'm against wasting stuff. I think we got the employees over there that can do the job if they're showed and led that way. And that's what I want.
All right, number nine, it's back to you, Mr. Schors. Highway seventy-sixth block project is scheduled to start for fall of 2022. Are you willing to work with all parties to help develop a plan and implement a local county road repair plan?
Of course. I wanna build up a good relationship with the state, 'cause if we got a good relationship with the state, they gonna help us when we go up and say, can we have an extra mile on, uh, a project? Can we have this? Can we have that? If we go, if I go in there and say, nah, nah, that ain't happening, they not, it's not gonna be a good relationship. I ain't gonna do that. I'm gonna work with everybody. I wanna work with the state, 'cause when you help the state out, you helping us, and the state's gonna come back and help us too. That's the way I feel. I haven't seen any plans. I don't know what the plans are for it. A detour around a water bluff being taken care of. Until then, I can't give you a definite answer of what can or cannot be done. But I guarantee you, I'll do everything I can to make it happen as far as the county, our part. I know it's gonna be inconvenience for the citizens, everybody here in the county, but to get something good, sometimes we have to put up with some stuff. It might not be the fastest way around for people to go to Lebanon, go to their job or whatever. I'm sorry. But when it's all over with, they'll be able to do it and not worry about a tree falling off a bluff or a rock falling off a bluff in the wintertime, going through a windshield, or somebody driving down through there busting a tire because there's a rock in the road. It's a danger, and it needs to be fixed, and I wanna help fix it.
Mr. Kemp, to you, the Highway seventy-sixth block project is scheduled to start for fall of 2022. Are you willing to work with all parties to help develop a plan and implement a local county road repair plan?
Yes, I'd be very willing to work with South Carthage, the state, and all the engineers and everyone involved with that project. It would be a very important project for me as I drive by that bluff every day multiple times. And I, and I realize that the only way around that is Hogan Street, the old Sanders Road, the old county road, none of them roads will handle the traffic that's turning on. Even Hogan Street looks like a good road, it handles the everyday traffic, but it won't handle Highway seventy's traffic. You can't get that detour going and in the middle of the project, start trying to repair Hogan Street Road if it's falling apart. So, yes, I'm gonna work with them and engineers and everyone involved to get a proper detour put in there so that there is no problem while they're working on the bluff.
All right, number ten, this question's back to you, Mr. Kemp. One of the hottest topics and most gossip generated in the past month has been the role and the future of current employees at the highway department. What are your thoughts and plans about whether to keep or replace those employees?
I have no plans for any immediate hiring and firing of any employee in the highway department. I cannot see how you can make such a decision without any firsthand knowledge of the employee's performance, job duties, and what they're doing. I mean, I can't fire people based on guessing. And as time goes on, I will address any issues that need to be addressed in a respectful manner. I would never terminate an employee without first giving them an opportunity to correct their actions. Only when left with no other option would I dismiss an employee. I look forward to working with all the current employees of the department. And will be very happy to hire more employees when it becomes necessary to get extra crews going and things. And I consider it unethical to dismiss employees and settle old scores. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Schors, same question to you. One of the hottest topics and most gossip generated in the past month has been the role and future of current employee at the highway department. What are your thoughts and plans about whether to keep or replace employees?
I want widely known. I have never said that I was gonna go over there and fire anybody. That's not gonna happen. Where that has come from, I do not know. But I'm here tonight to tell y'all, the people, and Rick Gibbs is a foreman over there, to let him know that I am not gonna go over there and fire the employees the first day or only. Now, I will deal with a situation if an employee doesn't meet the standards, if he's laying out, if he don't wanna work, I'll deal with it. I'll let him go. But until they prove to me that they doing that, they've got a job, and they will have a job. When y'all vote, the day before they got a job, and the day after, they'll have a job. Our employees over there is good employees. I wanna keep them. I want to keep them. They deserve to work. They want to work. I want to give them the opportunity to work, to prove themselves. I want to succeed. I don't want to fail. I don't want nobody to fail. And if somebody said that I was going to go over there and clean house, I'm telling you right now, that is not going to happen. It will not happen. That's the best I can say. If somebody's willing to work, they going to work. They going to have a job. They come to work, we going to work. There's going to be a job for them. They shouldn't have to worry about it. Am I going to get fired today? If they do their job? No, they ain't got to worry about that. Because I know that they've got a family, and they got bills to pay just like I do. And I want them to make money. But when they make money, I want them to do a good job. I'm a firm believer that if I ask an employee over there to do something, I'll do it. I'll get in there and shovel a coal mix right beside of it. I won't ask nobody over there to do nothing that I will not do. And I expect them to do the same thing. I honor the people over there. I don't want to see nobody lose a job. Times is hard. That's the last thing on my mind, is firing somebody. That'd be hurting the county. I don't want to hurt the county. I want to succeed. I want the employees over there to know that. They've got a job. As long as they do their job, they will have a job. They'll get a paycheck. I want to get a paycheck. I want to do the job too. That's all I ask. And like I said, I won't ask nobody over there to do nothing that I will not do myself. I don't care if it's operating a piece of equipment, shoveling a coal mix, spreading oil off the back end of an oil spreader, driving a truck, cleaning out a tile. I'm not going to ask nobody to do nothing I want to do. I've done it before, and I'll do it again. I respect the people over there. I respect them highly. They've got a hard job. Some people don't realize what a hard job they do have. It's not everybody that gets out there in ninety-degree weather and shovels coal mix. It wants to. Or run a truck up and down the road hauling gravel. You can't find qualified people nowadays like we've got over there now. But every once in a while, we do have another person that's qualified. I want to increase the people. I want to increase the staff. I think that ain't nothing but right. But when I increase it, I want to make sure that I've got the money to pay them. I don't go over my budget. And I want to make sure they do the job. That's all I ask. Plain and simple. I want them to have a job. I'm not going to fire nobody unless they don't want to work. If they don't want to work, I'll deal with it. I'll give them a chance. I'll sit them down and I'll say, why is this happening? Is there something wrong in your personal life because you're not showing up on time? Or you missing three days a week? What's going on? Can I help you? But just to lay out of work, just to be laying out of work? No, that's not going to happen. I've got to have employees that I can count on. Right now, we've got some good employees. I want to keep them. I ain't going to fire nobody.
All right, at this time, we did say that the commissioners have any follow-up questions? We allowed those, so does anyone have a follow-up question for either of you?
I don't have a question, but I, for them, I just want to say that the highway department has done an awesome job for us since Steve Hadgerley. And that Ricky and Melinda and all of them have kept that place going top notch as far as I'm concerned, and I can thank them enough. And I absolutely don't want anybody that's over there that's going especially close to retiring to get fired or let go by nobody. I don't care what he said or didn't say. If that don't matter to me, the fact is, I want them to have that job. They've worked too hard and too long to lose it.
All right, any other questions? Scott?
Which one's going to answer first now? Who's attorney?
Uh, Mr. Kemp. No, no, it's Schor being first, isn't it?
Schor. How will you work with the cities within the county and maybe help them in certain situations? Example, if they need some coal mix or hot mix to repair roads inside the city, you work with them and help them out? I mean, I think the way they've done it in the past, maybe the city pays for the supplies that they're needing and stuff like that? And you still work with them on that issue?
Sure, I want to work with cities. I want them to do it. If they need coal mix, yes, sir, they'll get it. I'll do anything I can to help the city. Anything that the law allow me to do. There's guidelines that you have to go by, and I'm going to go by them guidelines. But I'm going to help the cities, any cities that I can. South Carthage, Gordonville, Carthage, it doesn't matter. If they need something and I can help them, they going to get help. They'll get what they need and as much as they need. That's the best that I can, I can state on that. To this lady, I honor them. I honored the employees being there some time. I know how long Rick's been over there. He started when I started over there. He's been over there ever since. He's seen some hard times. He's done a lot of hard work. And I honor him for it. I honor the girls that's in the office. There's not no cakewalk over there. I realize it. They do the best they can. And I honor them for it.
Thank you.
Mr. Kemp?
Because cities, my answer's really not much different. I mean, I'm willing to work with the cities, helping them to accomplish anything that I'm accomplished within the law, what I'm allowed to do. And anything within that, yeah, I'm more than willing to work with all three cities to help them with their roads. And I mean, county roads run right into city roads. They all need to be in better shape. I'll only say that.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Miss Kemp?
Um, in your opinion, what is the biggest, like, most looming project, road or bridge project that we have in this county right now?
Do you have to go first?
I'm sorry, I have to turn it.
All right. Ask that again.
In your opinion, what is the biggest, most looming project that we have in this county right now, road or bridge-wise?
Thank you, Ms. Kemp, for your question.
Well, I have yet to get out and fully ride the roads to see what needs to be done and things like that. I don't know exactly what project is to make the project at the moment. I do know what they're wanting to do. Currently, they're running, wanting to do some shooting and chipping, and they're trying to get that lined out. And that will be a big project, get several road shot and chip and back up to good condition. And other than that, I mean, I'll have to go check the roads, decide what needs to be, top projects, and what to wait, and decide the order and which things will be done. But I don't have firsthand knowledge of what their biggest project is at the moment.
Schor?
I believe they go hand in hand. You got to have a good road to get to the bridge. You got to have a good bridge to cross to get to the other side. They both go hand in hand to make. One is no more special than the other. That's the way I see it. I want good bridges. I want good tiles. I want a good road. And I'm going to try my best to get them. I'm going to do that way. If a person sees something wrong with a tile, yes, I'm going to fix it. I'm going to fix it soon as possible. And somebody sees something wrong with a road that needs fixing right away, yes, it's going to be fixed right away. I'll pull a crew off of another job to fix it right away. If it's endangering the public, yes, ma'am, it's going to be fixed, and it's going to be fixed quick. It's not going to be fixed tomorrow or the day after. It's going to be fixed today. Soon as I know about it, it's going to be fixed. Or it be fixed as good as I can get it. At the end of the day, where it'll be safe for people to cross or drive on. Safety is the number-one issue. I want to get our trucks, all our equipment DOT certified. I want to get, I want to make sure that everybody is trained right on how to use equipment, how to drive a truck. I want to make sure that they know how to lay a tile, which they already do. But things have changed, different requirements they might not be aware of. I want to tell them. I want to show them. I want to prove to them. I want to prove what I say is that way. I want good tiles. I want good bridges. And I want good roads. That's what I want.
I guess my question was more getting at, um, just what he said, if you've been out there to ride the roads and that if you were aware of where are more major areas of preparing needed?
Have you rode the roads and just determined what areas need the major work?
I've rode several of the roads. I've got several roads in my mind that needs to be worked. I have a road, every road in the county. That don't mean that I'm not going to. I am. I'm going to prioritize each road and what they need. And I'm going to start at the top with the worst one. And I'm going to keep working down that list. We might have a crew working on the very worst, and we might have another crew working on, say, ten roads down on that list. That's the reason I said I want to meet with everybody, all the government entities, ambulance, fire, police, the mail carriers. Mail carriers drive these roads every day. They see it. They can tell me what's going on. That way I can fix it. I want to fix it. And that's all, that's the best I can answer I can give.
I think employees understand. I thought you were talking about what their projects are. I think they need to be done. What I think, when I was campaigning back last year, I was out riding roads, but they're going to be different now. There'll be different problems. Some of the time problems still be there, and some of them won't be, all that. But there are a few roads that get forgotten because of where they're at, where they lead to, and a lot of people don't use them. But you can't forget the people that live on those roads because they still have to use them. And there's a few like this all around the county. I know that, because I was over in this area a lot, but over the Club Springs area, all the roads from Club Springs to Prairie Ridge, St. Mary's, Ferguson Hollow, and Beller Hollow, all of them were in very bad condition last time I was there. I reckon they may have done some work on them. Since I've been there, I know I haven't been out there since I was campaigning. And when I was out there, they needed a lot done. They needed ditching done. They needed repairs to the road done. I believe the best way to fix all of our roads that end with a really steep hill would be on the portion that's on the hill to have a bid run up for as many as you can get into at once and have someone come in. Because like I said, we don't have the means to pave ourselves yet. I would like to get to that, but we're not there yet. And have someone come in and put binder down. Of course, asphalt holds up well. And you put that down them hills, it'll be done dealing with them hills. And then you got the maintenance on the rest of the road and shot and chipped, which will last because it's not a bad hill. That would be how I would address those issues. And there are a lot of roads like that, especially on that side of the county where there's a lot of steep hills. And the north side of the county has lots of hills like that too. And you don't have to pave the entire road to improve the road. You can pave the parts that always have issues and shoot and chip the rest of them. I guess it would be nice to pave all the roads, but I think people would be a lot happier going from asphalt and shot and chip and the whole road be smooth rather than just one road was good, but all the rest are bad. And I believe you could get more done that way by spreading out what you're doing that way.
Any other questions?
Schor, you mentioned a rainy day fund. Could you elaborate a little bit about the rainy day fund that you're talking about? Because I know that it takes virtually every dollar that we generate for the road department to have roads around the county. How would you generate a rainy day fund, knowing it's going to take virtually every penny that you get from the county department? Could you elaborate on that a little bit? I'm just curious.
When I said rainy day fund, if you'll remember, I said it might be very little that I could put in. But every dollar I can save, I'm going to put in. If I can, like, bid tile and give it a cheaper price. And if I don't use everything in our budget for tile, I'm going to put in that rainy day fund. Same way with rock. If the price of gravel goes down, which I'm afraid it's not, but if it does, we've got so much allocated for rock. If I don't use it, it's going to be in the rainy day fund. I'm not going to spend it unless it's a half-two case in case of emergency. There's ways of saving a dollar. It might be a dollar here. It might be a dollar here. It might be a quarter. But whatever it is, I'm going to put in that rainy day fund. It won't be no hundred thousand dollars. It won't be no million dollars. No, I'm not going to stand here and say that. It might be five hundred dollars. It might be a hundred dollars. It could be a thousand. I'm not sure. I can't stand here and tell you how it's going to go as far as actual dollar figure. But anything excess that I can save us is going in that fund. Just because we got it don't mean we have to spend it. That's the way I feel, unless we have to.
Any other questions? Speaking now for your roads, please. All right, thank you, gentlemen, for coming to town and answering our questions and taking time. We'll see you back in Austin.
I'd like to say one more time. If I hadn't made my points clear enough tonight, please contact me. Let me sit down and talk to you. Ask me more questions. I want you to know this. I want you to ask me why. I won't be able to tell you why, what my plans are, if I hadn't proved to you tonight, right or wrong, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you the way I feel and what I want to work towards. Please, ask me questions. Call me up. I'll meet with you on a Saturday. I'll meet with you on a evening. I'll meet with you anytime. We'll discuss it. I want to discuss it.
Mr. Kemp, if you have any?
Yeah, I'd like to convey that same message. If y'all think of any questions that you forgot to ask tonight or anything comes up, I am more than happy to take anybody's phone call messages. I'll be glad to come out and meet with someone and sit and talk to them and answer any questions they might have about anything they want to know.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
That's all the business I have. Let's do a adjournment, Steve.
Second.
Second, Ken, you're up. The host is taking two adjournments. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.